Let me know.
Sub two to the first.
The motion, you call as the executive session?
No.
We'll do that at the end?
Yeah.
Can you repeat that?
Well, I suppose, Cal.
Just make sure it's up.
All right.
It's, we're up to the presentation for Anderson Street.
Okay, there you go.
First thing on the agenda is presentation of Anderson Street Neighborhood Preservation Program. Mr. Mike, one of them.
How are you, everyone? Oh, let me get in the microphone. Everyone here?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'm joined by Connor Fox. He's our Vice President of Real Estate and Development at Greater Bergen. The last we spoke was back in March or April, and we presented to you a five-year implementation plan for the Anderson Street Historic District. That was $125,000 worth of improvements and revitalizations in the neighborhood over the next five years. And, you know, ultimately, year one was a very tangible, visible plan to really make some immediate impact within the neighborhood. So what we're coming here tonight is our final recommendation for our implementation. We're looking for blessing in council to go ahead and probably start procurement and placement of our improvements with probably the next one. Frank, go ahead. So our first, our first implementation item in the five-year plan was a litter eradication program. $30,000 implemented. What you can see right now with the existing conditions up and down the street, we have four types of refuge receptacles. All receptacles are only for garbage, no recycle bins on the street and park. Most appear to be decades old. What we want to do is replace those with a composite cedar dual recyclable and trash receptacle. In our budget, we could plan for 16 of these receptacles on the same stretch from Linden and Union. We would do, GBCA would be doing the removal, disposal of the current receptacles, power wash and prepare and install in all units. And the city would continue their current schedule, but this would have a new facet of including recyclables as well. Frank, go ahead. Outdoor seating was another main thing that we talked about within our first year implementation. There is no outdoor seating from Union to Linden along the Anderson Street Business District. The only outdoor seating that does exist is within the park right now. There are three different benches, types of benches, that are in the park. Again, those are ones that seem to have been around for 10-plus years. They're deteriorated, sagging. Our proposal with $20,000 is to put eight new park benches within every slab that exists, in every placement that exists within the park right now. These will be composite six-foot benches, cedar, just like the, you know, the finish of the receptacles that would be placed in the park and up and down Anderson Street. We would prepare slabs, power wash for the grade if necessary, and install the benches. We're also proposing three additional benches at the corners near bus stop and intersection of Pennyboy Place and Anderson Street, and one at Union Street, Anderson Street. Additionally, we are proposing to provide two square gaming tables. We thought this would lighten up activity within the Anderson Street Park. So these will be four-chaired, concrete, thousand pounds. They are not going anywhere. Gaming tables with checkerboard or chessboard tabletops. Go ahead, Frank. One of the biggest initiatives that we saw, and we had a meeting with the Neighborhood Preservation Program from DCA last week for walk the neighborhood, and could visibly see the conditions that were there are the crosswalks or the non-existent crosswalks. Right now faded, not visible, 129 accidents along the stretch from Union to Linden within the last five years. The intersections need a revamp, they need traffic calming. It's not only aesthetic value, it's a public safety value. And what we see with this is that when drivers slow down, they're not only going to be able to drive more safely, but they are also going to be able to observe the business district that exists on Anderson Street, instead of it being a cut through from Main Street to elsewhere within the city. So what we are proposing, the installation of, and this is the design that is most commonly used in a lot of neighborhood municipalities. It's pretty streamlined, it's, you know, fairly accepted by most municipalities. Installation of a red brick thermoplast pattern inside the existing but newly re-stripped borderlines that exist at these intersections already. This is not a cobble or brick installation. It is a paint that goes over a pattern. It lays a little thicker than the pavement itself, so it creates a little bit of a rumble, but it gives the idea that it is an actual print. It's a high-heated thermo polymer material. It can probably be installed within a day or two at each intersection. Needs two hours of curing, so there's not a lot of, you know, interference with closing streets. And holds up probably for 15 years, 10 years longer than most old lines that exist today. In addition to that, we would be working to install the handicap accessible crossings as well. Now, we do have a $44,000 budget for this. When we do go out for the procurement, what's allowable within that budget might be two intersections, might be three intersections. We're gonna go from Union, which seems to be the most detrimental right now. You're taking your life with your hand if you're driving or walking in that intersection, and work our way up to Linden. If we don't accomplish it this year, it's going in budget next year to finish this program. And then the other major initiative that we want to complete was the void that is pretty much left around Anderson Street Station right now. We have a clock that's not working. We have a large plaza that's the board of any foliage, any seating. We have great decorative lighting that's kind of more on the Linden side from the tracks that we need to utilize. We have overgrown trees that are really blocking all the businesses, so we want to prune those. But we also want to hang self-watering floral baskets from nine decorative light poles that actually exist on Anderson Street, and that would be from the train station to Linden Street. We've done this in Garfield. We just put 40 up along with 40 sidewalk planters. It has spruced up the neighborhood tremendously. The facility has come to life. We want to do another gaming table at the plaza. The reason that we kind of proposed during the beginning of our phase was putting a lot of seating there. We had talked to a lot of business owners around that area, and seating does attract some sort of undesirable consequences around the plaza. We think one of the gaming tables will just be enough to get people that are waiting for the train or just want to have a leisurely lunch or anything else to have a spot to sit. But we really want to encase this all with large, large cedar box planters, either on, both in the plaza and on the other side of Anderson when you look at the ride into local retaining walls. It would be a great gateway from Linden to Anderson Street. These will be eight-foot cedar planters that would really replicate the design of the garbage receptacles and the seating in the park. So with that, we asked for any questions, comments? But ultimately, we are halfway through the year, and we need to spend down this grant and get some things done. The MTP office and our administrator who worked with the district with us last week is very excited about what's to come. So we are excited as well to get, to get moving on this.
Thank you. Looks very nice. Yeah. And I'm really happy about the best we can do. Anderson Street gets a lot of, you know. People using crosswalks instead of just crossing the middle of the road like they'd be doing forever. But that'd be a big improvement, everything would be a big improvement. Very nice.
Yeah, I think you did great things. I mean, I think just the items that we picked, the stores, you know, it looks like we can hopefully stay in budget and yet really accomplish a tremendous look. I'm 100% for it, you guys did a great job.
It looks great. The only question I have is the ADA ramps. You will be responsible for putting them in with the first walks or?
We will work with, yes, we will work with contractor on that. If we need any guidance from the city on how, you know, you know, it's been implemented at large scale in the past, we will. But we feel like we have a contractor that supplies a very durable thermoplast paint. And it's tri-state, everyone knows the NADA Part 7 does the application, so, you know, if we need somebody that works on the ADA specifically, well, we won't be afraid to ask.
Okay, thank you.
It's the collaboration.
Question for you, though, the crosswalks.
Yep.
Are there any local areas that have those crosswalks already, you know, installed?
My understanding in Hackensack, I am not aware of any.
Not in Hackensack, I don't.
We just did it in our MTP community in Garfield, up to Save. And Rutherford, that just, buddy?
Rutherford just. Garfield on?
Up to Save Street. So they just, their streetscape up to Save Street, so from River to Midland, their intersections are all done as well. And they look fantastic. If you saw the street before, it was much fun to be seen.
And Rutherford recently did it at Felician College, or rather, on campus, as well.
I saw that, and I think it'll be better, eh, to be there, like Westwood?
You'll see them in different, in different designs as well. Some people opt for a gray brick, so it looks more like hauvles. Some, you know, opt for designs, which I know, you know, we have gone a little out of the realm. This isn't a district for that crazy artistic development. We, we came to the conclusion that this is probably the most streamlined look.
Now, the garbage can that you're putting up there, they're gonna be from like a wood, a cedar?
It's a composite. The wood, we do not want to break down. We want this to be long-lasting. It is grant money, so we want these things to last. When we're looking at the receptacles that are there right now, they're made out of different materials. Some are of a wooden material, some are composite, some are plastic. And they've seen serious deterioration over the years. These are UV-protecting, and when they are, if they are tagged, spray painted, anything else like that, we'll be able to come out and we'll be able to power wash that off and hopefully get the clean paint.
I'll give you time on your thing.
Hold on, you know.
Sorry.
Connor Fox, Greater Bergen, part of Greater Bergen Services as well. We do the plantings, we do the flowers, we do the watering. As Mike just said, if a garbage can does get tagged, we have a street team, a clean team. They come out, they address the issues. If they get tagged or dirty, we check it as we leave. We're in town, they're down the block once a week. We're required to water these plants at least twice a week with the self-watering, so again, we have a specific team that addresses these items and is all included in this grant.
You don't say?
Yep. The only thing we don't do is obviously the trash removal will continue to be done by the city of Hackensack.
So you implement that, and you're gonna do the?
Correct. We do, we do the yearly plantings. We do the maintenance of these plants, we make sure that the baskets are clear. You know, people leave stuff in it all the time.
For five years.
For five years. Thank you, Albert.
Not forever.
Yeah, we'll have a conversation in five years.
We have a dedicated team. They come out, they power wash, they clean, and ensure that the plants are new and living and are healthy.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. You got us a little. So much.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Second is regarding an introduction this evening for an ordinance, Chapter 170. It's a two-hour parking change from a 30-minute change, which will be from 0.200 feet north of the northerly curban of Johnson Avenue to Spring Valley Avenue. This is a change that was requested due to some loss of walk-street parking for some businesses in that area, and traffic has reviewed it, and thinks it'd be fine to change the timeframe from 30 minutes to two hours. Yeah, there's a salon, there's, there's a couple of businesses. Yep, absolutely. Next, I have the, I'll call O'Brien for the CSO and storm water and parks update.
Good evening, everybody. I'm doing the CSO and parks update for June 28. CSO construction status for Clay Street, separation contracts, separation contract one. As of the last Cal meeting, the contractors still performing a few punchless items, one of which will be completed tomorrow, Thursday, which is milling and paving of State Street at West Camden, paving of West Camden from State to Main, and a patch on Main Street at West Camden for a gas relocation. We also did approximately 87 million feet of curb in Lot U that was torn out with the box culvert installation. Contract two, which is from Faschini to the river. Again, we're still waiting on for products, material availability. It's delaying that project a bit. Contract three, the authorization to award was issued on the 21st, and the contract has been awarded new prints at tonight's council meeting. The non-CSO areas, Voorhees Lane, pump replacement, pump station replacement. Contractors still in, doing some mills, and our engineer suburban is doing a review. Installation is anticipated for fall of 2022. Large diameter sanitary sewer jetting and CCTV inspection. This, this last section that we're waiting on, BCU A, from what I heard, they did their pump replacement, so we just gotta get in touch with them to fire them up and see if they'll lower that one section so we can finish the camera. We also have an update on Pine Street project, where there's approximately 968 million feet of storm sewer pipe installed, as well as 20 new catch basins, and that's on the last block of Pine Street from Spring Valley to the building. Next phase on that project is curving and then milling and paving. Parks update, the, at Columbus Walkway, pavements have done. Site restoration has been completed, just some punchless items that are left, a section of fencing. Basketball hoops need to be installed, as well as the color coating, which is anticipated mid-July. Stide Park, there's some progress there. The building was delivered, and the contractor is making some adjustments to the utility connections, so hopefully we'll get that back on track. Just have a few updates for the upcoming council meeting. Bond ordinance 3422, which is 13.5 million for Clay Anderson, which we're gonna be receiving $5 million principal forgiveness on tonight's council meeting. I think, see if those are present further on that. Resolution for DOT local aid for a grant for the intersection improvements, Signal at Summit and Passay. We're also gonna be introducing a proposal from Negliat to do the design work and engineering services for that project as well. Change order number one for the CDBG project for Lordice Street is on tonight's council meeting as well. And that is to supplement some sewer repairs that need to be made before milling and paving are completed. And that's also scheduled for this week. So that last section will be finished.
Your job, right?
And we have resolution to award Phase Two. I already mentioned that. And that's gonna include Hostel Pulverts tonight for new prints. Yeah, so that's, they're the only ones that are in, so that'll get done quick, so that's good. And the other Negliat contract is for some improvements at the intersection of First and Beach and First and Central. We're gonna install some supplemental pedestrian signal heads at those locations, because there's only two, so it'll be four when we're done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question on the Pulverts from the House, though. So we're exactly?
That is gonna be on railroad route on the west.
On the west side?
East side, east side.
Oh, I thought we were on the west.
No, east side.
On the east side.
Yeah. Because then we're gonna, we're gonna do the jack of war underneath to the park, and then there're gonna be for detention on the east side.
Okay, so what do we do on the west side? Anything for detention? Is that the plan?
Yeah, bigger box over.
Okay, so we're mentioning that pulvert on both sides of the truck. That should help a lot with those issues over here, is to contain some of that wood.
Yes, those boxwalks going way up to Third Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, next presentation is on summer busking program. Somebody here from the Main Street Business Alliance. I didn't have a show.
Thank you, Vinnie. Mayor, Council, good evening. Looking here tonight is, obviously, one of Brian Keating, who was our chairman of the USAC Business Alliance at Decker, who also serves on that board. I was hope to be joined tonight by Arts Bergen. I, I, they, they had their own board meeting tonight, and I said, get here as close to 7:30 as you can, so they might walk in as I'm speaking. But as you know, Arts Bergen is the entity that falls under the Northern New Jersey Community Foundation that's been helping us with creative placemaking throughout the district for several years now. And it appeared to this, to this governing body on a number of occasions with various different programs. And the latest one that we came to you with, just to, just to catch us up and you may recall, was the Hackensack Fields Program. I think Vinnie was just, was just coming on, on the City Manager, when we made that presentation. After much discussion, we decided to either shelve that project for the time being until some of the development settles down on Main Street, and we can put it at the location that we originally thought of, at Demer's Place, because it just, as it turns out, the Atlantic Street location that we were looking at is just problematic for too many different reasons, which I won't tie up that discussion now. But we're diverting some of the funding that we have for creative placemaking towards other programs. One of them is this Busker Program. And we've announced a call to artists through Arts Bergen, through their art circles. You may have seen it and tapped into online. And just briefly to describe the program, we're talking about bringing in four performers or performance groups that could do anything from singing, juggling, playing musical instruments, comedians, and various artistic forms to provide performances at specific dates in August. Actually, one in July and three in August, for about two hours at a time, and some in the, two of them in the afternoon, from 12 to 2, and another one from 5 to 7, actually, three from 12 to 2, and one from 5 to 7. We're trying out different times and different locations. Those locations are the Court Out Green, the sidewalk entrance to Johnson Park.
Library.
I'm sorry, excuse me, the library, something. The mural location, which is 131, 135 Main Street at Demer's Place, and the east side corner of Bergen and Main. Coffee shop there, and I think four restaurants. And it just makes sense to try to get some exposure there. So rather than do things in a vacuum, and I know we have our mayor now, great food, serving, I guess, as ex-official member on the creative placemaking team, we wanted to, at least bring to you what the idea and what the thinking was, and to try to ensure that, you know, we have the city's support in these efforts as we move forward. And right on cue, we have Daniel De Laurentis and Maureen from Arts Bergen, who can try to fill in the gap, but they don't know exactly where. So I guess we're talking with specific questions, and if I can answer in short, somebody here can. Brian Keating from our board.
I have a quick question, too. Do you have any idea, like, times and like certain day of relief months is gonna occur?
Yes. I can rattle those off to them.
It just doesn't have to be specific, but like what you're?
Okay, so we're, we're talking about July 29th, my anniversary, okay? From 12 to 2, August 5th from 12 to 2, August 12th from 5 to 7. And the latest it's ever going to be is 7, okay? And then August 18th from 12 to 2. You know, I think it's important to note that, you know, we've gotta try new things in the district, okay? We're doing this on the early side. Quite frankly, I would rather it be later, but we're gonna try this first early, okay? See how it goes. Honestly, I'd like this to end at 9 or 10 o'clock at night and see how it does. But let's give this a shot, and make it earlier. See how well we do with the performers. See how well we do with, with the selected content. And also, what Albert didn't mention is, is that the content, and Daniel De Laurentis wrote up a, a, a call to, to artists. And it was very well written, very well, very well laid out. But one thing I want to point out, and I think it's really important, if I can find it, I will, is that the goals, uh, uh, we should have you read the, Daniel, you read the goals, but I want to just point out one thing, okay? I want to just point out one thing, okay? And that is, if I can find it, if you want to read it exactly, that there's a do's and don'ts, okay? And I know the city would be happy to hear about the do's and don'ts, okay? I should have said, good evening, everybody, I didn't do that, so Mayor, that's why, Mayor, Council, I'm sorry, I didn't say good evening.
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, nice to see you. The do's and don'ts, family-friendly content, please, I mean, that's worded perfectly, right? Original creative work encouraged, I mean, we want original works if we can, if not, we'll take other, but no vulgarity, lewdness, nudity is definitely out that night, okay? In case you were all wondering about that. Advertising, political statements, profanity, and violence are out, okay? Use of small battery-operated speaker amp is allowed, small, okay? We don't want to disturb neighbors, and, you know, we've got, obviously, control that, but again, this ends, no later than 7 this time, because we want to do a practice run, okay? And finally, merchandise, oh God, I can't read that.
They can sell their CDs.
They can sell their CDs and shirts, okay? And that's the extent of it. And after that, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle to answer any questions that you may or may not have.
Thanks, Brian, appreciate it.
I still have questions about the dates and time, should you answer that, or should everyone?
I can answer that.
Okay, all right, so looking at what you just gave me, so it's only one evening, right? The others are all sorts of...
Yeah.
The one evening, I think you said the...
Hold on, I want to just verify that before I say this, Deputy Mayor.
All right, I'm just like trying to think about coordination.
Okay, July 29th from 12 to 2, August 5th from 12 to 2, August 12th from 5 to 7, August 18th from 12 to 2.
Okay, so all except, I think I just looked at my council, all of them except the 18th are Fridays, right? Just keeping in mind, the ones that are during the day, 12 to 2, you have the food truck Fridays too, right? So I don't know if you're coordinating, because you have a lot of people that come to the food truck Fridays, would any of these be post-practicing to that?
I don't think, I don't think...
I mean, it would be nice if they were in post-practice sessions to that, and then my other question, again, is the one that's 5 to 7 is also a Friday, so are you aware that on Friday nights of Atlantic Street Park, they also have music? So just look at your dates, maybe coordinate with, you know...
I think we want to try Friday, okay? I think we just, and it's in the district, that's what we're trying to do, just to get...
We'll try not to conflict, if I understand the definition.
I'm not even saying conflict, I'm just saying, we already have music on Friday, maybe it's not the best night to do it, maybe a night that, like, Tuesday, we have the concerts. I'm just asking you to think about it.
I think this, I think this city is big enough, but...
Their times don't overlap either, and the Friday night...
No, it's only the one, the time.
Yeah, because it's the same night, but I think they don't start till 7:30, right? They start at 7, and I'll be okay.
It's only the one night on the Friday, but the others, maybe we want to, is any of the locations close to the green, because you're going to have all the people there at the food trucks, maybe it would be nice if there was some music in that area, I don't focus on that.
They already have music.
Do they have during the...
Yeah, almost every time, yeah.
So in terms of the location, I mean, we tried to be strategic with them, so the first location is on the green during, you know, 12 to 2 during the food truck Fridays, so we thought that was kind of a natural place to do it. The evening one is on Demer's Place, where the mural is, we figured, there's a couple restaurants there, there's Candle of Vanna, so we thought it might be just kind of nice, yes, the outdoor seating for people to listen to music, and just remember that, it's not just necessarily musicians who are applying to this, it could be any type of performing artist, so it could be a dancer, it could be a juggler, a comedian, things like that, so. And then the other place, 12 to 2, is at the library entrance, so, you know, if it's little libraries open, they agree to it, I spoke with the director, and she was fine with it. And then the other, the last place is on the corner of Bergen Main, which kind of has that little...
That's the 13th, so that would be... Just answering your question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
If no other questions from the council, I think we're done.
I just have one last thing. So, you know, I don't know, you spoke about before we came, but I just wanted to point out again that incorporating arts and culture into the downtown is in the city master plan on page 65 of the document, and, you know, I think we as Arts Bergen, you know, we've been working with you guys for the Main Street Alliance for like six years, and, you know, we really like, would like to work closely with the city council on coming up with, how do we define a public art program? Because I think, you know, we're working and we're trying to figure it out, but we would love to have your input and get you on board, and really figure out a transparent process to do that, so if there's any way we can work with you, Mayor LaBrusco, I know that you have the legs on for the art...
Well, the key word you used tonight was juggling, because that's what the city's been juggling between Main Street and the pandemic, and trying to get the retail back, it's been a juggling process, so we're going to juggle this arts right into that, it'll be the moment thing. All right, thank you.
Hey, you're good, Sean.
Nice to see you. I just wanted to add one thing, I don't know if you're aware of it, but in the words of the fake, the late Jerry Solms, I want to give Danielle kudos, because what you're going to see coming out of what she has worked on with her Arts Bergen, is we highlighted, did you know about that, we highlighted four immigrant businesses, we gave them grants, and that's all done now, and when Dave Green, our marketing person, saw the finished result, he just, he's like whetting his whistle with all the opportunities to, right, different ways to, we're hoping they're being moving into Stars, it's a five-minute videos, and they made superstars out of four people on Main Street that have maybe gone unnoticed in years past. My daughters participated in it, they helped with bilingual activities that needed to happen, and so I was there at several of the filmings, super professional done, and the way that these immigrant businesses were engaged is in a way I've never seen in the 20 years, 20 years of Alliance has been active now. So you're going to get ready to see that, and Danielle did an amazing job with her organization, so get ready for that, I think you're going to enjoy it, thank you.
Anyway, if ready, maybe you could visit us again in another town, we can play for it, if you have a free.
Okay.
I think we're going to enjoy it.
Okay, yeah, let me, right here, right?
Five minutes?
We can do that whenever you want, because it's done now, right, Danielle?
Um, it's almost done.
Yeah, let us know, we'd love to see it.
Yeah, we're going to show them at the movies and with the Stars.
Oh, good.
Okay, great, great.
Thanks, Danielle, nice to see you, Brian, good to see you.
Thank you, thanks, Mayor. Last presentation is regarding the alternate flight path at Teterboro Airport, I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Kenneth Schien with a short video update.
Okay, just, you know, last, I always try to keep everyone abreast of what's going on in our continued fight to get the planes that are flying over Prospect Ave, Magus Tech edible center, Hiller's Grammar School, to use the new alternate flight path that we were so fortunate to have the FAA publish this December of 2020, without its use July of 2021, and unfortunately, very few pilots are using it, and, you know, we've talked about this together. So, you know, my continued effort to say, oh, does it cancel, you know how important this is, and we'll do just about anything to try and encourage its use. So I've been speaking to a number of people, actually, even as far away as California, pretty much throughout the country, and others that share in some of these problems, and what's the best way to try and attack it? You know, the pilots aren't requesting it, how can we get them to request it? I was not having a lot of luck with the FAA doing that, I have not been having a lot of luck with Teterboro Airport doing that, so pretty much I say, well, what about the operators of these business jet companies? You know, perhaps if we could appeal to them, that maybe they would listen and say, okay, you know, we see the impact on that community, and maybe they could do something to help us. So I had, I had a meeting with not only the FAA, but also with the NBAA, the National Business Avionics Association. Now, those are the folks that deal directly with the operators of these business jet companies, and they have these meetings with them, they call it the Teterboro User Group Meeting, and all of these operators attend, and they discuss issues. So I asked if I could come to one of those meetings and plead our case, and I guess they were a little nervous about having me pre-speak about how exactly what I was going to say, so I can understand, so they said, if you could make a short video that kind of talks through that, and, you know, pretty much begging these operators to have their pilots to request this alternate flight path, they said, we will, if we agree with what's in the video, we will play it at the user group meetings and see how that goes, so it's a step in the right direction. So it had to be short and sweet, and I wanted some videos and some pictures of the actual aircraft, so thanks to the citizens out there who helped me, and sent me videos from their balconies, and sent me pictures, and pictures that we had already, Alvin and I already accumulated, and I wanted, it had to be short, so there couldn't be too many of us, but I didn't want it to be just me, so Woodcliff Lake has really been an active participant in this initiative as well, so Councilwoman Jackie Gaddaletta from Woodcliff Lake also joined me and had a few words to say. So I think it's short, what is it, six minutes or so, six and a half minutes? So not to bore you to death, but this is going to be going out to them, and just to give you some idea, it has a lot of facts and figures, as well as our begging them to try and use the alternate flight path, so here we go.
I am Kathy Canestrino, Deputy Mayor for the City of Hackensack, County Seated Bergen County, and here with me today is Jackie Gaddaletta, Councilwoman for Woodcliff Lake. We are speaking to you today in hopes of gaining your support to minimize the noise, pollution, and safety issues that many northern Bergen County residents are forced to live with each day due to the high volume of jet traffic at Teterboro Airport using runway 19. Calls for an alternate approach path for runway 19 originated shortly after the FAA installed the instrument landing system, or ILS, approach to this runway in 1999. There were concerns even then that aircraft using this ILS approach would directly fly over Hackensack University Medical Center, Hiller's Grammar School, and probably the most densely populated street in Bergen County, Prospect Ave, which houses many 20-plus story buildings on final approach. This grammar school is not air-conditioned, and the teachers cannot teach with windows open due to the noise. This is unacceptable. Since 1999, the business jet usage at Teterboro Airport has increased by 40% a year, from approximately 103,000 a year to 144,000 more recently. In response to this, we were fortunate that the FAA published an alternate flight path in December of 2020 that follows Route 17. Route 17 is a much lower elevation than the path the ILS takes, and it avoids the residential areas. It is a GPS-navigated route, but it does not include the ILS landing. The recommendation is that it can be used under good weather conditions with air traffic control approval, of course. Let's look at the data for the first quarter of 2022. This shows over 32,000 jet movements, meaning arrivals or departures. Our concern is the arrivals using runway 19, which was over 9,000 for this quarter. There are noise monitors strategically placed throughout Hackensack, and it just, the arrivals, 99% of them, just over 75 decibels to this residential area at Hackensack, 48% of them register over 80 decibels. Yet of these 9,000-plus arrivals, only 79 pilots chose to use the new alternate flight path this quarter. Today, we are asking that all owners and operators of these business jets, please ask the pilots to request this new alternate flight path over Route 17, whenever permits, to provide some relief to our residents. We would welcome feedback on its use, and we look forward to resolving any issues together. And now, Councilwoman Gaddaletta, do you have some comments you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. Hello, and thank you all for taking the time to listen to our concerns. I am a four-term Councilwoman, and over the past two years, I have received more calls and emails from concerned residents and neighboring communities over this issue than any other. The constant barrage of low-flying planes has significantly affected the quality of life in Woodcliff Lake, my hometown, and many neighborhoods in upper Bergen County. We kindly ask that you encourage your pilots to use the alternative flight path over Route 17 whenever it is safely available. It is a viable option, and with proper training and encouragement, we are sure this will help alleviate the current levels of noise pollution that are truly affecting the way we are living in our towns. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Kathy?
I want to thank everyone for taking the time to listen to our message. We are here, we're actually begging you to help us in this initiative. The conditions have gotten really beyond what's acceptable, to be living and enjoying our outdoor space and affecting our children's educations. We appreciate you, and we appreciate any effort you take to help us. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, hope you enjoyed our short video, I hope this helps. You know, I think it's the first step in the right direction, let's see if we've appealed to them, and the numbers tell the story. So just wanted you to know, this council is not giving up the fight, we will never give up the fight. So one step at a time, one fight at a time, and thanks to all those that are sending me your data, that are using air noise, a few of you are sending it to me, I really appreciate it, helps with the data collection. You hear them, file those complaints, right? That's what's most important, because that data has to get logged and has to get tracked and get forth. So keep filing, our numbers are going up, every report I get, I have more and more people helping me and help us get this done, and so, thanks to all of you, and let's pray for better numbers next quarter.
Good job.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay, your motion's all to the public, please.
Aye. Councilmember Murray, aye. Deputy Mayor Canestrino, aye. Councilmember Kennedy, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrusco, aye.
Aye. Everybody in the public who'd like to speak now, please come forward, give the name to the clerk, you will have three minutes.
Are you?
No, right there, right, so you're, sorry.
Is that done, is that okay?
Nine. Go ahead, sir. Yes, just give your name to the clerk.
My name is David Hayes. Me and my family, we've lived in this town for more than 40-something years. We've not had a whole bunch of complaints from our neighbors, okay? We apply the rules as far as parking our cars correctly, but we've got two issues that we want, that we want to address. Number one, national holiday. What I have here are three tickets that my family got for parking in front of our house on theoretically Juneteenth. For some reason, the City of Hackensack deemed Friday the Juneteenth celebration. For some reason, the city of Hackensack deemed Friday the June 10th celebration. Every television, radio, or newscast said that June 10th would be celebrated on Monday. All national holidays, the banks were closed, the post office was closed, and all the other public offices were closed. So obviously, my family felt that they were safe by parking in front of the house, as they've done for all these years. But now I got three tickets here that you guys, excuse me, I don't mean you guys. I mean the police department gave me, and they said, "Well, that was the rule." Well, they didn't send us any notice. Every day on my phone, I get messages as far as street closings, vaccine shots, et cetera. But for some reason, I never got any message from the city of Hackensack indicating that you would be celebrating June 10th holiday on Friday instead of Monday. So I don't think that this is right.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. What I want to do is, well, number one, I'll let the city attorney explain how this comes to be in New Jersey.
Do you want me to do that, or Vincent, would you like to? I'm happy to do it if you prefer.
No, doesn't matter.
Yeah, why don't you add an object, Danny?
Because I believe you're...
You have something else?
Yeah, yeah, I have a second.
Okay, so finish your statement, then we'll jump in.
Okay. And the other thing, as far as taking care of our problem, I think we, you know, we've done an excellent job. But what I have here are reports from the police department. We've put in four calls to the police department because my neighbor trespasses and tears up my wife's flower beds. So after all these years, now she's coming over and she's doing something like that. Now, it's not a financial situation, but I think it's more of a health and mental situation. And each time we talk to the policeman, he says, "Okay, go file a report." Well, we filed a report, but we've never gotten it made in court. With this, the tickets, this was on the 19th, today's the 28th, and I've got a date for court already. Something's wrong. Those are my two issues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Billy?
Okay.
I'd like to, tomorrow, give you a call, because how many tickets did we issue on Monday? I'm just curious, you know?
I don't know.
Let's find out.
It's a lot, because someone else on my block...
I understand. The city's also was put in a bad predicament here because the state deemed the state holiday on Friday.
Yeah, right.
So as a municipality, it's the city of New Jersey, that's what we had followed.
Okay.
So that's why we're in a predicament.
Well, that's why I'm asking. You know, just a simple message that you send out every day as far as fixing the streets, you could have sent that to me on Friday.
I don't disagree with that. So that's, we'll have a conversation with Vince and see what we'll go with this. But I'm concerned about both things. I'm very concerned about, you know, all those complaints he has, and no one's even gone to address it. So it'll be addressed.
Mr. Hayes, have you ever, did you ever, sorry. Did you ever sign a complaint for the trespassing with the PD or anything like that? A report is a report, but a complaint will actually give you a court date.
Okay, well, I've gone down there several times, and I said, "What is happening with these?" Okay, and they said, "Well, you got to fill out a complaint." And I thought I filled out a complaint. But this is from March, April, May, and then one for June. This is June, May 15th, 5/15/22. Okay, and then there's one after that, which is June. And we're saying the same thing all the time. And took to the point where she put this handwritten note in our mailbox saying, "Please forgive me. I think I've overstepped my bounds." Okay, now, to me, this is a situation, see something, say something. I'm afraid that if we don't do anything, she may hurt herself, she may hurt somebody else. Okay, so you'll take care of it, right?
I will look into it, but again, as far as the trespassing complaint?
Yes.
You have to sign a complaint, so...
I thought I did.
Well, maybe that wasn't really to the proper way. That could very well be. But you need to sign that complaint. That will definitely get you into court with the slate. There's no question about it. As far as the June 10th holiday, real quick, like the mayor said, we followed the state rule or the state guideline on the holiday, which was Friday. What happened was the state of New Jersey had passed the legislation before the federal holiday was actually passed. So they set it up for the third Friday of June. The feds decided they're going to celebrate it on June 19th, no matter what day it is. In this case, because 19th fell on a Sunday, they celebrated it on Monday. And that was the reason why. So our holiday per se was on Friday. So Monday was a regular day of business for the city of Hackensack. And typically, if parking is suspended for any reason, like a holiday or something like that, we will put out a message, like you're talking about, a municipal message that says that it's suspended. Typically, if it's regular enforcement, in other words, on Monday would have been a regular enforcement day because the holiday is on Friday, we would not put out a message. And some of them we can think about in the future, but right as it stands right now, we only put it out when it's suspended. Not if it's a situation where we're two different holidays and two different days.
So me, as the neophyte or amateur, okay, how am I supposed to know that you have to do things differently than what the national holiday schedule is?
Well, in this case, yeah, well, in this case, it was actually posted in the Bergen Record. They did a whole article on it. You don't read the newspaper? Neither do I.
No, the Bergen Record is gone.
Or, that was talking about...
About 40-something years, I supported the Bergen Record also, okay? Now they disappeared.
Yeah, everything's online.
And you, and look, I just want to point out, you know, if you feel this was unjust, I mean, you should take it to court, bring it to municipal prosecutor, explain the circumstance. And my guess is you'll probably receive, you know, a pretty fair reception if you choose to take that action.
Well, that's exactly what they told me multiple times, okay?
We can't fix it. Once the ticket's been written, the ticket's been written. We can't do anything about that.
They gave me the date here.
So we're way past, we're supposed to be at three minutes. We're like at six minutes. So, but I would recommend doing what the city attorney said. I think you're going to get a better one.
Go to court.
Tell the situation, because I think the judge is going to say, because he's going to have to find him, say.
Okay.
All right.
And as far as the complaint, I'll put another one in with the 2/15.
Okay, and make sure that you follow, you ask them to tell you how to file the complaint with the municipal court.
And, you know, as I said, personally, I think the woman needs some help, all right? And if she doesn't get the help, somebody's going to get her. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening, Bridgette, Hackensack. I want to thank the city manager for June 10th. I want to thank Mr. Savage for putting it together at the recreation department, even though it should have been a little bit larger. We'd like to thank those people who actually got it done as quickly as possible in that short amount of time. We'd like to thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your speech. And I'd also like to thank my cousin, who is the actual prosecutor, chief of prosecutor, Jason Love, for actually speaking as well. So I am very grateful that the community got to celebrate it. We just hope that next year it's planned out a lot better and that we will include community so that way other people in the community can have an input on how it should be celebrated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One last one, public, you'd like to speak. Please give the name to the clerk, sir.
Good evening, Marty Smith, Prospect Avenue, member of the Condo Core Multi-Unit Rental Advisory Board. I'd like to start by thanking the council for once again this year recognizing the veterans' community here in Hackensack with the very nice services at Veterans Park. That being said, I think there was only one problem there, and that was the fact that the spacing was a little tight to the size of the crowd that we had. I think the city park in front of the courthouse is a much better venue to have this type of service held. But it was very nice anyhow, and we thank you for recognizing our veterans' community. At the last council meeting that I attended, I reported that we had been successful in obtaining a meeting with the county engineer to discuss traffic safety issues here in Hackensack. That meeting took place at the county office building with the county engineer and the assistant engineer. Three members of our advisory board were at that meeting. The first question we asked him was whether or not it was a fact that county had just completed a traffic safety study of Polly Fly Road. His answer to that was no, county had not conducted any such investigation. So we brought up issues concerning Polly Fly Road. We gave him a list of those issues that makes Polly Fly Road a very dangerous street for pedestrians here in Hackensack. He explained to us that every municipality in Bergen County can request upgrades on county roads in their individual municipalities. The only problem is that Bergen County does not have sufficient funds to cover all of these upgrades for every municipality, and that any upgrades that are done require those payments to be made by the individual municipality. And then he brought up a society issue that some years ago, he didn't specify exactly how many, that there had been discussion about putting in a middle-of-the-street median on Polly Fly Road running from Essex Street to the Route 80 overpass. And at the time, I thought to myself, a middle-of-the-street median, six feet wide, plus crosswalks and flashing pedestrian signs would make Polly Fly Road a much safer street for pedestrians to cross. Then quite coincidentally, I happened to be driving on Johnson Avenue towards Kintitimat Road. And at the intersection of Johnson Avenue and Jefferson Street, where the new apartment complex is coming online, quite a big one. I would assume there are probably at least 400 to 500 units in this complex. What do I see but a center median on Johnson Avenue running in front of that complex? Now, I don't know if the developer was responsible for paying for that median to be installed or if it was taken care of by county or the city. But these items are certainly worthwhile looking into. I think this idea of a center median for Polly Fly Road should be revisited because I think it certainly would be beneficial. When he mentioned this to us, we said that, well, putting in a six-foot median would of necessity be cutting down one and a half feet of space on each of the traveling lanes. And he explained he would compensate for that by cutting back the sidewalks on both sides of Polly Fly Road by three feet each. And that would leave the same space available for the traveling lanes. The last thing I'd like to mention to you is the recent situation in Texas at the school where 18 children and two teachers were killed. And that is partly due to the fact that it took the police officials such a long time to take positive action. Now, we hope this will never happen in the city of Hackensack, here in New Jersey, or in any other city in the country. This is not just restricted to schools. It happens in churches, in synagogues, in shopping malls, in supermarkets. And we've seen it going on now for quite some time. I think the important thing is that immediate action is necessary in situations such as this where the assailant has to be confronted immediately. Now, we don't want our police department to put their lives on the line unnecessarily. However, I don't know if our police department currently has every patrol car with a protective shield in the trunk of their car so that the first responding officer can engage with the perpetrator and draw his attention away from his intended victims. This would give them more time to seek shelter and to move away from the danger.
We're getting, we're up around five, six minutes, best three-minute mark. So I appreciate, but I'd like to sit and have a conversation with the best school safety because I think it's probably the most important thing facing this country right now. But we have to move on. Thank you. Next person from the audience, please.
Hi, my name is Sonia.
Good morning.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to, are you all considered for the Hackensack Chronicle?
Yes.
Okay. There was an article in the June 17th Chronicle about the stabilization. It is an important tool attacking New Jersey housing crisis. It says in the Mr. Housing Crisis Factor, facing our country, I am proud that Montclair is implementing a fair and balanced rate control ordinance. We have taken a stand to protect renters while balancing economic realities and property ownership, thus providing stability, predictability, and fairness in our rental market. This is what I'm looking for it has. I know that we have real stabilization, but as it was mentioned before, it is prior to buildings that are 1985 and prior. We need to bring this code to all buildings in Hackensack so that it's affordable to everyone. If Montclair can do it, Montclair Township, the mayor, and the city council of Montclair, and I believe they even had to go to court, but they won. They won, they have it, and there's no reason why we can't have it here. And I am going to fight for it, guys, so I'm just letting you know. If you want to fight, and if I have to get a group to fight with me, I will. Because, and I'm a landlord, I'm a landlord. So I just don't see that as fair to people. Especially when that gentleman came and said he just moved to Hackensack. He's only been here for a year. He's in one of your new buildings here. $1,600 a month. Within one year, they went to $2,200. A $600 drop. Ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And I'm telling you that if that continues, you're going to have transits in and out of this city because they won't be able to afford it. We're going to have a housing crisis like California over there where people are living on the streets because they can't afford the rent. And I'm not going to see that happen. I've been in this town, I've grown up in this town, and I'm not going to see that happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looking to close again the house session. Anybody else in the public who want to speak, Ann? Motion close to the public?
All right.
Second, local?
Councilmember Ronald Rehber, aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino, aye.
Councilmember Javi, aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Mayor LaBrusco, aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
And your motion to close the executive to the whole, or the executive session?
Executive session. All right.
Second, local?
Councilmember Ronald Rehber, aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino, aye.
Councilmember Javi, aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Mayor LaBrusco, aye.
Your motion to close the council hall?
All right.
Second.
Councilmember Ronald Rehber, aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino, aye.
Councilmember Javi, aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Mayor LaBrusco, aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to invite it to, uh, the...